Good afternoon, everyone. This is the April 21st, 2021 meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission. We will now come to order. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted on the Planning Commission webpage There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the docket listed on the agenda during the virtual public hearing portion of each of this item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to that docket item. Now we'll go ahead and take roll call. Gavin McMillan?
Present.
Dave Su?
Present.
Melanie Niski?
Present.
Sam Fitch?
Present.
Sam Libby?
Present.
Todd Quigley?
Present.
Leishen Gargano? Not present. Mark Bloomfield, not present. And Ann Goldfarb, Chair, present. Commissioners, before we get started, let me just remind you to identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. All votes will be roll call votes. Please keep your video on when possible during the hearing. Please remain on mute until you're ready to speak. When you begin speaking, please identify yourself as a planning commissioner. Example, this is planning commissioner Ann Goldfarb. It may help to keep your participant list open in Zoom so you can see who's speaking. Person who's speaking will be bolded. First item on the agenda is approval of the March minutes. Excuse me, are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Niski. I move that we approve the minutes from March, from our March meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner McMillan, I second.
Thank you. We will do a roll call vote. Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Su?
Aye.
Commissioner Niski?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch?
Aye.
Commissioner Libby?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
And Commissioner Goldfarb, aye. Do we have any staff updates today?
We do not, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So we have one agenda item today, and that is SU-21-0001, the Stoddard Vacation Rental. At this time, I'll take the opportunity to explain the public hearing process. There will be an opportunity to provide public comment remotely on the subject item for which we've specified we will take public testimony today. The order of presentation will be to hear from staff first, next the applicant, and then we'll move to accepting public comment from any individuals who wish to speak. Some people have signed up in advance, and we will call on you first. If you did not sign up for public comment, you may sign up in the chat. Please direct your comments to the board. The Chair will direct any questions that arise during the hearing to the appropriate party. Once we've heard all testimony, the public hearing will be closed. Planning Commission will then discuss the application and vote to take an action. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up beforehand. Once you've signed up in advance, once those who've signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you join by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who is joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you're finished speaking, Zoom will place you back into the room as an attendee. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine, and we will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. When it's your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you're unmuted, either via computer or phone, if you've called in, please state your name and address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Time can be pooled at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. You will need to provide the names and addresses of the other people, up to three others beside yourself, who are in attendance and donating their time to you. Anyone who is pooling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person hearing. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box is for speaker signup only. Please remain on mute when possible. The moderators will mute you if we see that your connection is the source of background noise. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. Applicants, please have your presentations pulled up and ready to go. I'll announce when we are ready for you to present, and at that time, you can share your screen. So this is the beginning of our public hearing for this docket item, SU-21-0001. And we will now hear from staff. Jean Ott?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rainey Ott with Community Planning and Permitting.
Sorry, Rainey.
Going to share my screen. That's okay. Alright, so that should be up now. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is SU-21-0001, the Stoddard Vacation Rental at 258 Fisk Fenner Road. So we're located in Allen's Park, off of Big Owl Road, just east of Highway 7. The owners and applicants are Randall and Sarah Stoddard, and their property manager is Brittany McGinnis with Vicasa LLC. The property is an approximately 1.3-acre unsubdivided building lot in the Forestry Zoning District, and there's an existing 992 square foot residence on the property, which was constructed in 2011. The applicants are requesting a vacation rental for up to six guests at a time for approximately 120 days per year between June 1st and October 1st. Since the subject property is less than five acres in size, it is not the primary residence of the applicants and the property owners, and it's requested to be rented in excess of 60 days per year. Approval through special review is required for the requested vacation rental use. For a little bit more background, on December 3rd, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approved docket DC-190005, the Short Term Dwelling Rental and Bed and Breakfast Code update, which removed the previous lodging use of short-term dwelling rental and replaced it with three short-term rental categories, including vacation rental. The Board also approved a licensing ordinance to license short-term and vacation rentals within the county. Under the newly adopted Land Use Code, vacation rentals must provide all parking on-site. They cannot be used or marketed for events such as weddings, and the owners must maintain a valid vacation rental license, which includes meeting all those associated requirements that are under the licensing ordinance. So here's an aerial map of the property. You can see it's clustered with several other homes along Fisk Fenner Road. Some of which are occupied year-round. Others farther west on Fisk Fenner are more seasonally used. The existing driveway and parking area are shared with the adjoining neighbor to the west, and we received comments from this neighbor with concerns about guests trespassing onto their property. Two environmental resources identified in the Conference of Plan are located on the subject property. Very high biodiversity significance over the entire parcel, and a small portion of riparian area in the northeast corner. No new development is proposed as part of this request, and the referral response from parks and open space indicated no concerns regarding impacts to these resources. Here's the site plan showing the existing residence, driveway, and parking area. The onsite driveway is located just left of the existing well and the three parking spaces that are in front of and just to the right of the residence. Here's an aerial map again, highlighting those three parking spaces. And this is the updated floor plan provided by the applicant, which shows three sleeping rooms total, including two bedrooms and a pullout couch in the living room. Some site photos. This one is looking south from Fisk Fenner Road, up the existing driveway. The closest neighbor that shares the driveway is to the right, where you can see they've kept their driveway plowed. Further to the right, Fisk Fenner Road continues to the west, but isn't regularly plowed during winter months, since many of those residences are seasonally used. This is looking north, back down the onsite driveway toward the road, and the neighbor's driveway is to the left in this picture. Here's the residence looking at two of the parking spaces located immediately in front of it, kind of outlined with that orange. And this picture was provided by the applicant, on which better shows that gravel parking area. The third parking space is located between this tree and the property line, shared with the western neighbor. The property boundary is shown here approximately where the orange line is. Here, we're looking south at the rear of the residence and the two existing sheds. Behind me, the hillside slopes up pretty steeply to the south, and that part of the property has remained undisturbed. And again, looking at the two parking spots located in front of the residence. This application was referred out to the typical agencies and departments. A few responses of note include from access and engineering staff, which reviewed the proposal and found that legal access to the subject property is demonstrated, but the existing driveway appears to not comply with the multimodal transportation standards for width. The applicants must submit an updated driveway design to widen the driveway to 12 feet. The response also noted that the existing parking area appears to be adequate for the use and that the onsite driveway must be the one used to access the residence. Staff found that the proposal would not result in negative impacts on the surrounding transportation network with the anticipated 27 average daily trips. And the response also noted that the applicants must sign an access improvement and maintenance agreement, or an AMA, prior to issuance of a license, which is an agreement for future maintenance responsibility on Fisk Fenner, since it's a private road. The Public Health Department responded that the onsite wastewater treatment system is sized for a maximum of six people, including children. Sorry, had to pop up. And the applicants must obtain a commercial use permit in addition to providing guests with wastewater treatment usage guidelines. Notices were sent to 110 adjacent property owners. Two comments were received in opposition, which voiced concerns regarding wildfire, wildlife, noise, parties, traffic, and the use of the shared driveway. So some special review criteria. Criterion one, that the use will comply with the minimum zoning requirements. The additional provisions for a vacation rental state that they cannot be used or marketed for weddings or other events, and the owners are required to maintain a valid Boulder County vacation rental license with all its associated requirements under the licensing ordinance. These requirements include wildfire partner certification for wildfire mitigation, that guests cannot have outdoor fires except for gas grills or fire tables, having a local manager responsive to issues within one hour in person, meeting the safety requirements in the building code and passing an inspection. This includes things like fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and checking that the structure is safe for guests. The applicant must also provide proof of adequate insurance and remittance of all applicable taxes. And guests must be provided with information on being a good neighbor, wildfire safety and evacuation routes, wildlife safety, and onsite wastewater treatment system usage. With these additional provisions recommended as conditions of approval, staff finds the proposal meets the minimum zoning requirements of the Forestry Zoning District. Criterion two, will be compatible with the surrounding area. The surrounding area is comprised of forestry uses as well as year-round and seasonal residences. And Allen's Park has a long history of being a seasonal tourism community with lodging accommodations. Referral comments from access and engineering, use will exceed 27 average daily trips, which is below the 30 identified in the Land Use Code as being compatible with residential uses. As previously mentioned, the existing driveway and parking area located on the subject property connect to the driveway that serves the adjacent residence to the west. Based on concerns received from the western neighbor, staff recommends requiring the applicant to post signs or otherwise clearly demarcate the property line onsite. This is to prevent guests from inadvertently trespassing. Guests must also not be allowed to use the neighbor's portion of the driveway or their parking area, and should be notified of this arrangement prior to arrival. Also, as part of the licensing requirements, guests are given a map of the property to show where the boundaries are located. Criterion seven, that the use will support a multimodal transportation system. For a vacation rental, the Land Use Code requires one vehicle parking space per sleeping room and one additional space for the local manager in case they respond to something in person while guests are onsite. However, the code allows deviations from this requirement based on the specific proposal. The floor plan submitted by the applicants indicates two bedrooms and living area are intended to be used as sleeping areas for guests. Therefore, a minimum of four parking spaces would be required with the additional manager space. Based on the spatial constraints of the property, which doesn't really have room for an additional space, staff does not recommend requiring the applicants provide a total of four parking spaces. Instead, because we didn't identify conflicts with the requested maximum of six guests based on traffic and wastewater treatment system considerations, we recommend limiting the parking onsite to three spaces total, with two reserved for the guests and one reserved for the local manager. We would then, it would then be the responsibility of the applicants to inform guests of this parking restriction and ensure that all guest parking remains onsite for up to six guests, which might arrive in one or two vehicles. As noted in the referral response from access and engineering, the existing driveway does not comply with the transportation standards and needs to be widened to a minimum of 12 feet. Staff recommends requiring that the applicant submit a driveway design demonstrating compliance with the standards at license application. If the design requires non-fundational earthwork in excess of 50 cubic yards, then the applicants must also submit a grading permit for the work, but staff anticipates that the grading work will be minimal. And so with that, Community Planning and Permitting staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU-21-0001, Stoddard Vacation Rental, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point?
Commissioner Libby, hey, Rainey, I have one question about the driveways. Just to clarify, the expansion of the driveway to 12 feet is for the private driveway, not the shared driveway? There are two, is that right? Or is that for the shared driveway?
Let's go back to the aerial.
I lost track of which was which in the maps.
So I think this aerial, as fuzzy as it is, probably shows it best. So the driveway that's onsite is one that you can kind of tell between the trees. That is the one we're talking about that needs to be widened to 12 feet. The one over here is on the neighbor's property, and there are no modifications that need to be done there. We're just not even considering it part of this proposal. Like, that's just the neighbor's driveway.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Other questions?
Commissioner McMillan, one question. The 120-day maximum, is that just for the applicant's request? Or is that per code, the number of rental days that they can have?
The Land Use Code does not have a maximum or minimum number of days for rental. The 120 was what the applicant requested for this property, and so that was what we based our analysis on, was approximately 120 days a year, this property being rented.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Under criteria number eight, will not cause significant air or odor, water, or noise pollution. I'm curious, does the code address pets on these kinds of rentals?
Not directly, but the handout from the county that the applicants are required to give guests related to wildlife safety does address pets, and so does the good neighbor guidelines. So those include like guidance on not letting your pets off-leash, not letting them bark at wildlife or chase wildlife, and things like that.
Okay, then I had one other question. Are fences allowed in this area or no?
Yes, fences are allowed, and they don't need a building permit if they're six feet or less.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
This is Anna Milner's staff. The applicant and agent have just been promoted and should be able to speak whenever they're ready.
Thank you. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Am I there yet? Yeah, I am. Good morning here, good afternoon there. First of all, I'm Sarah Stoddard, and my husband Randy and I own this little house at 258 Fisk Fenner Road. We've been connected somehow many years through our family there at that site. A lifelong family friend lived there in her own little cabin through her retirement years, and we visited with our family practically every summer, beginning in 1968. When March died, she left the cabin to us, which was an incredibly huge gift. And we originally planned to remodel it. It quickly became apparent that it wasn't remodelable, and we had to apply for a building permit and take it down and rebuild a little house. So what we've got here is a nine-year-old house, two bedrooms, one bath, and we've been keeping it for summer use only for nine years, and it now needs to begin to help pay for its upkeep, which is why we're applying for a vacation rental permit to help keep it so that we can keep it in our family. Our children and grandchildren love it, and we would really hate to have to sell it. We are absolutely committed to meeting Boulder County's permitting recommendations and requirements. I do want to address the issue of the 120 days. For some reason, when we made the application, I was under the impression I could either apply for an application under 60 days or under 120 days, which is why that number is there. And I wrote down June 1st to October 1st, and I don't think that's what I really intend to ask you for. I would like to know if we can amend that to be 120 days, which is approximately four months, and have that be the only restriction so that we could flex it during the summer. We really are only interested in renting it as a summer vacation rental. We're not interested in having it be a year-round rental, even though the house could do that. It's an entirely occupiable winterized house. I would like to ask the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commissioners, if I can change that today. Clearly, and I need to give you one other little piece of information. Our home is in Hawaii, and we have always lived here, but many of our summers have been in Colorado. Our kids are connected there, and we love it. So half our heart is here, half our heart is there, and clearly, we could not consider doing this sort of a thing without a really strong management team behind us. I searched and searched and finally settled on Vicasa. And I'm going to ask our Vicasa connection to speak with you too today. The one thing that really pleased me about them is that they are an all-encompassing property management marketing situation, easily accessible to me by web, and the property manager is available 24/7. You need to know, or you might be interested to know, that we also hire a caretaker who is in Allen's Park, she knows with Allen's Park Services, and he oversees that property because we're not there. He visits frequently and helps us opening and closing and any repairs that need to be made. We've worked with Rainey and have enjoyed it for this year to get this submitted, and she's given that list of recommendations to us. I'd like you to know that we intend to comply with all of them, and that that's what we need to do, the hoops we need to jump through to make this possible. I hope that we're able to do that as we hear your recommendations and that we can move forward. Half our hearts are still in the mountains, and we very much hope to be able to keep this little house for our family. Hopefully, we can get there ourselves again soon. That concludes my very short presentation, and I would like to know if I can introduce Brittany McGinnis from Vicasa to talk about what they provide for us in this situation.
Yes, go ahead. Would you like to introduce her now?
Yes, is she available? I don't see her picture. I'm thinking she's supposed to be on.
I'm on, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, hi, Sarah. My name is Brittany McGinnis. I am with Vicasa Vacation Rental Management and Sarah's Property Manager Consultant. Vicasa is a national vacation rental company with a local team in Allen's Park. All of our homes require a valid short-term rental permit to operate. I'm happy to answer any questions that come up in regards to how we care for our homes, screen our guests, or how our local team, you know, manages any situations that may occur. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Shu. I didn't quite understand your request to possibly amend the 120 days. It seemed like you wanted to limit it to the summer because it wasn't winterized, but I think that timeframe is only like 122 days, so I'm not following.
No. I didn't, I don't think I submitted my original application the way I intended to be. I would like it to be 120 days. Our house is winterized. We could rent it all year if we have permit to do it, but we prefer to keep it open in the summer. And when I submitted my application, I put down June 1st to October 1st, and I would prefer, please, to not have the calendar dates connected with it, so that if we needed instead to open from July 1st to November 1st, we could. I want that amount of, I would like the 120 days of flexibility, if that's possible. Is that clear?
Yes, I think that clarifies it.
I see some odds, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Brittany. If you could tell me, when guests come to the property, is someone from your organization there to meet them? Or how does all that work? You're muted, so we can't hear you.
Thank you. When somebody is booking our vacation homes, typically it's contactless. So we see the booking come in. We do kind of a general background check, nothing too invasive, but we make sure that there's no suspicious social media activity, that they haven't been banned from any of our partner websites like Airbnb, VRBO. Sometimes we will call them directly and just kind of see what they're doing in town, depending on perhaps their age or how many people they say they're traveling with. We have no problem canceling a reservation if anything seems fishy. And at that point, after we have proof of identification, we provide them with just an access code, whether that's an E-lock or a lockbox, and they enter the home. So the whole process is contactless. If an issue were to arise... If an issue were to arrive, arise such as a complaint from a neighbor or the guest needed like a breaker flipped or something, our local team would at that point, of course, come and visit the home.
And does the, you say if there's a complaint by a neighbor, are the neighbors aware that you are the agent for this property?
Yes, they would be made aware. Yeah, we would be happy to provide our, our contact information for our, our local team. My contact information if I wasn't available and other agents that could get out there.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
This is Commissioner Neski. I was just curious because it seems like a lot of the onus of the regulations for being a good neighbor and all that, it would be beneficial for the guests to have that information before they arrive, particularly, you know, for the parking requirements and everything. Is that information that gets sent out before they arrive on site and how does that process work?
Yeah, absolutely. So anything specific to the property, any regulations that we want to put in place, we would make it very clear on the initial listing. So when they're booking the home, they're made aware of, you know, how many cars they can bring, things like that. And then we provide a little kind of welcome book with additional rules for, for them to look through as well. We're happy to place like additional signs throughout the house for, for anything necessary. You know, whether it's trash or parking or local contact information.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? All right. Hearing none. We will open the hearing to public comment at this time. The first person we have signed up is Phil Stern. Phil, are you with us? If so, you can begin speaking when you're ready. Is, is Phil with us? Anna, do you know?
Yes, Anna Milner staff. Phil, I promoted you to panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself if you're called in on the computer. If you're on the phone, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Mr. Stern, you're, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know how to get a video picture here. Oh, start video, here we go. Okay. I'll make my comments brief. I'm a neighbor in the Allen's Park area. Phil Stern, P.O. Box 56, Allen's Park. I have been watching short-term rental activity and have great concern. While I appreciate the diligence that has been shown by the applicant and by her agent, we, we living in the mountains have been presented with a situation where truly enforcement falls upon our backs. If we're a neighbor or an adjacent neighbor or live down the road and there's a disturbance, we're the ones that have to complain. And that puts us in a rather onerous position and often results in rather negative comment flowing around the community. And that's something that I think we're being asked to do in a situation like this. Fisk Fenner Road is a rut. It's not much of a road at all. If you've ever walked it or driven it, you know the circumstances on it. It's very rural and there aren't that many people living there. I'm familiar with the actual structure or the previous structure that Marge McCulloch had owned. I had been in that house. I know the area well. And my suggestion is, is that we, the county now are finding ourselves in a position of having to support people who are unable to support the upkeep and care of their own cabins as second houses. If this was something that was the primary residence, I'd have more sympathy, but these people live in Hawaii and that's great. Enjoy it. We have lots of snow here. I'm sure it's very warm there. But for us to be put in a position where they, they say in the application, this will help offset the cost of owning the property, allow guests to enjoy it and will prevent us from having to give it up. Give something up that means so much to us. Well, I'm sorry, I think they have to give it up. I'm of the attitude that there is no such thing as a free lunch. If I can't afford it, I have to make other provisions. And this is basically asking the county to permit a business like a hotel in a very rural neighborhood with the neighbors having to do the enforcement. And although there may be an Allen's Park connection, as is typical around here, it may take an hour and a half for an hour, hour and a half for the sheriff to respond. We have a neighbor that periodically goes out shooting. We've complained numerous times. And it's something that we shouldn't have to do that. The neighbor should have the neighborhood response of not doing such things that disturb the neighborhood. But when you have people coming from outside the area, and although they may love the mountains, they're recreating and they may do things and wildfire is certainly one of those things that really bothers us all. And that's something that a wildfire can start very quickly. The fire department is a volunteer force and responds very slowly. And so my time is, is probably about up. But my suggestion is, I don't think we should allow this. I think this is exactly the sort of situation where the cabin could be rented for six months or the full year and would make some body who might provide labor in the community a very nice residence and would also then make money for the people in Hawaii, not the other way around. So I think short-term rental is not the way to go. I know what's happening with short-term rental. You can make a lot more money on a daily rate than you can renting something out on a monthly basis. But that's not the issue. That's not what the county should be supporting. So i- in my case, I have sympathy perhaps for the Stoddards, but at the same time, I think this should be rejected. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
The next speaker that we have signed up is Karen First. I hope I'm pronouncing that, your name correctly.
Yes, did I come through?
I see, I can hear you. I don't see you.
Okay, am I there now? There we are.
You are, yes.
Okay. Hi to Sarah Stoddard and my best to Randy, your husband. John and I have been concerned about this being a vacation rental and I guess I, when I hear Phil, I pretty much second everything he says about short-term rentals visit versus somebody that's going long-term that would live there and take care of the place and has an invested interest in the property. And I think we're very concerned about the fire danger. I know Brittany, you talked about that people would be well-educated to know what, what needs to be done, where their garbage needs to be so it doesn't attract bears. The fire danger is so, is so evident about all those properties there. And we have seen in the cabin next door through the summer months, we have seen illegal fires. And I don't want to have to be the one that goes out there to patrol that. And I think we're scared to death of the potential fire. Also, there have been lots of noisy loud parties. And I think what happens when it's a part-time vacation rental, people aren't vested in the property and they're gone over, you know, they there for the weekend and then they're gone. And they don't have much consideration for the neighbors there. Just to reiterate, we have the cabin at 818 Cabin Creek, which our property goes back up to Fisk Fenner Road. So we can often out of our backyard window see the illegal fires going on in the outside property and we can hear the loud parties on the weekend. So I do agree with Phil and a lot of the things that he said. And I'm looking over my notes here. It is not a very strong road and when we had the flood up there, a lot of it washed away. And I think six people is an awful lot to be using that road. And I, I learned a lot today about your parking places and where that would be and those kinds of things. So this was beneficial for me to learn about what you're all trying to do. But I guess I get, would like to see that property also do more long-term than have all those people there for a short period of time. And I guess we've had our cabin up there now 20 some years and we've gotten to know our neighbors. But having people coming in and out all day long or all weekend, it's just not the type of place we want up there for security, forest fires, bear management, et cetera. So I think I've gotten everything there. I like your idea of the good neighbor guidelines and they should be sent out to somebody ahead of time, but trying to enforce these things, it's difficult and, you know, I don't know, I guess Brittany would give us her information about how to reach her, but it's kind of sad to think that we might have to monitor that property because nobody else is there to do it. So thank you for your time and I guess I would like to, you know, hope the request is denied.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak at this time?
For Goldfarb, Edward Yagi has signed up to speak and he's up next.
Great, very good. Mr. Yagi, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you very much. Can you see and hear me?
Yeah. You have a lot of echo.
I sure do. How, is this better?
No.
Let me turn off my speaker. How about now?
No, still getting the echo.
I have no idea why I'm doing this. Let me just put my comments in my chat.
Mr. Yagi, this is Anna Milner staff. I don't know if you're signed in via two devices, but sometimes that causes the issue. No, okay.
I'm not.
I'm James Assistant County Attorney and I just, Mr. Yagi, I would like to request that we should find another solution here because the chat is not part of the record. It's not recorded and we want to make sure that we, we get your comments in the record.
Let me try signing out and I'll sign right back in.
Okay. Anna, will you know when he signs back in?
Yes, I will. I'm monitoring.
Okay, great.
This is Anna Milner staff. While we're waiting, I would like to call attention to the fact that we do have a dial-in user, someone called in over the phone. So if you're on the phone and you're interested in speaking today, you'll need to press star six and actually unmute yourself on your phone to speak. Press star nine if you'd like us to help facilitate that.
Are we going to hear from that speaker first? Before Mr. Yagi gets signed back in?
No, I do not see that that individual has raised their hand to speak pressing star nine. So no, I don't think we have anyone else besides Mr. Yagi.
Okay, all right. Can we proceed with any other questions to the to staff or to the applicant or if they would like to make any further statement? Before Mr. Yagi or do we need to wait to see if he comes back?
Looks like Mr. Yagi's with us now.
Okay, great.
Okay, I have no idea what that was. I had to reboot my computer.
Okay, yeah, this is better now. Thank you.
Yes, I think it is. Let me turn my speaker back on. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay. I hadn't additionally planned on making any comments. I was just wishing to observe the process, but having heard the first two comments, I feel compelled to speak up a little bit. I support this application. I also have, I'm a, I'm a neighbor of the applicant. I have a family, I'm a co-owner of family property on Big Owl Road, fairly nearby. It's been in the family for over 100 years. So my family has been up there for five generations and I'm very familiar with, with the area and the region and cabins, both newer and, and older. And my feeling, I have very strong feelings about short-term rentals myself. And my feeling is that it's better to have management than to not have management. It's, it's just that simple. Properties which are periodically monitored, maintained, which are used are just going to be in far better condition generally and the property will be in far position generally. If there, there's a, my great, my great-grandfather who bought our property had a saying, he said, "The best thing for property, the best thing for land is the foot of someone who loves it." And that is something that I heard growing up. And now it's my responsibility for my property and the surrounding properties as well. And I am now teaching my own children that, that philosophy to try and keep our properties maintained as well. These properties will be safer overall. They will have better fire mitigation overall if they are properly maintained and they're maintained by owners who care about them, by property managers who will occasionally visit them and people who will use the property and appreciate it and take good care of it. Regarding the comment about renting for longer periods of time, I have tried that. We rebuilt one of our cabins 21 years ago and I would like nothing more than to rent my cabins for long periods of time. And for 20 years I have tried and have failed miserably. In 21 years, I was able one time to rent my property to, to a young couple for four months during the off-season. But even though my property manager has tried very hard over the years, it's just not possible up there for many reasons. So again, I understand the concerns that have, that have been raised. I share them very, very strongly. But again, this is about balance and it's about balancing the needs of the properties and the communities and all of the larger issues. And so I feel that with, with reasonable regulations and, and good oversight, there is absolutely nothing wrong with renting these properties. It's been going on for 150 years. And so with good management, with good support, with good information sharing with the community and between the neighbors, which I think needs to be improved upon, but not necessarily with this application. I support reasonable management of short-term and vacation rentals and I support this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Members of the public who wish to speak? Hearing that there are no further members of the public who'd like to speak, I up close the public comment portion of this docket item at this time. Are there any final questions for staff, the applicant? By the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Neski. I have a question for staff regarding violations of the of the regulations in place. It looks like there are a couple fines in place for minor offenses and major offenses. What is the process of, you know, say there are multiple legal fires, which I think is considered a major offense? Is there a process of revoking the license? How many offenses are required to do the to revoke the license and noticing to the air to the neighbors in the area of violations?
I'm glad you asked. I was going to bring up the violations in my comments. So yes, there are violations with with, there are penalties for the violations between a hundred and fifty dollar fine and a one thousand dollar fine with the major offenses being those that are health and safety related. The if a violation is not resolved or satisfactory progress towards resolution has not been made within a reasonable timeframe, then that's when we will impose those administrative fines. Or even if it rises to that level, we would task law enforcement personnel with using the penalty assessment procedure. I think, let's see, they get they get a notice by first class postage, a minimum of thirty days prior to taking further action. But if we didn't receive a response after thirty days, then at that point we could proceed with imposing those penalties.
Thank you. And I have one other question for you regarding the length of time for the vacation rental specifically. I wasn't able to find it quickly. Is is there a minimum and a maximum amount of time for the vacation rental?
No, it is specific to the proposal that the applicant puts forward and just based off of what they had in their application is how we came to the approximately a hundred and twenty days between June first and October first. But we wouldn't have a problem if there was a change to that seasonality piece.
Thank you very much.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. So that if, as the applicant requested, those the limitation of the months were deleted and it was just a hundred and twenty days per year, is that an issue? And if not, how is that done? How is that accomplished, that change?
So it wouldn't be an issue because our analysis was based on a hundred and twenty days for the property being rented, not necessarily the date range that it was being rented for. So we wouldn't have a problem changing that and it would be simply removing that from the condition of approval and just saying it's approved for approximately a hundred and twenty days.
So we would need to do that in our approval process today?
Yes, if you if you'd like to do that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay. And one other question for you. I think you mentioned one of the requirements was adequate insurance. And could you speak more specifically to what types of insurance and how you determine what is adequate?
So are the county risk assessment team provided that information for the licensing ordinance? Let me find where that is. So they have to, the applicant has to demonstrate that the property is covered by an appropriate insurance policy, which I think is they they're a couple of different ones listed in the licensing ordinance that cover rental exposure and with an adequate liability and property insurance limits at a minimum liability of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
This is Commissioner Shu. A question for staff. So with oh, so there's several comments about the condition of Fisk Finner Road. I just want to confirm that that was considered in the transportation impacts part of the analysis.
The access and engineering folks did not have any comments about the condition of that road. And from my brief time on it, it was covered in snow pretty much the entire time, but it seemed in relatively good shape. I didn't notice any large potholes for the section between Big Owl and the property.
Okay, I also have a question from Ms. McGinnis. So if a neighbor had a complaint about a party or they saw a bonfire happen, can you walk through the steps that would occur when you get contacted? How long would it take for, you know, someone to arrive on site? What kind of penalties would there be?
Sure. So we would be able to get there within the hour. So again, they would have our contact information. We would kind of look into the situation to see what was going on and take the necessary steps, you know, thereafter. So typically, you know, of course, there's, there are things that happen, but just to give you an idea, we manage thirty thousand homes across the United States, all of our markets, of course, have local presence. I think we're one of the only listing sites that is like really specific about a no party policy when it comes to fires. It's something that we're making, you know, top of mind, whether that's like additional text messages, emails, signage. So we are happy to say, you know, if you do break X, Y, Z rule, we will ban you from from our website for life. So we have found that it works quite well. I think many users who, you know, many people prefer to travel to vacation rentals and therefore I think they're a little bit more apprehensive to to break the rules and be banned from, you know, Vacasa. We also list on, you know, Airbnb, so potentially could be banning them on there. So typically if they are breaking a rule like setting a fire in Allen's Park, Colorado, we would probably just ban them for life. And in the case, just to mention, in the case that they were throwing like some sort of party or their maximum occupancy was over the stated amount, we would ask them to leave immediately.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
Chair Goldfarb, this is Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting. I just wanted to step in and make sure that we asked both staff and the applicant if they had any responses to the public comments. That was we heard.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, are there any comments?
Yes, I'll make a couple of comments based on some of the public comment we received. So the local manager contact information by the licensing ordinance requirements has to be provided to the guests. And a copy of the license that is issued when someone actually gets their license for a vacation rental is provided to the immediately adjacent property owners, which also has the local manager contact information provided on it. So there's that. The like I said before, events are not permitted and the Good Neighbor Guidelines actually inform guests of that specifically and also of the noise ordinance limits. And then I also wanted to mention that there's a little bit of an incentive for applicants and property owners to stay in compliance with these rentals because they get a discount on their licensing fee when they renew if there are no verified violations in their two year rental period. And that's it for me.
Hello, Commissioners. Amelia Willetts, Community Planning and Permitting. I wanted to respond to Commissioner Sue's question about Fisk Finner Road. That Fisk Finner is actually a private road and so it is privately maintained. And also when I went out for a site visit in addition to what Rainey had said, it was pretty, pretty deeply covered in snow. So I wasn't able to observe the existing condition of it. However, it is up to the residents to maintain Fisk Finner Road.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other, any other comments by staff? Any further comments by the applicant in response to what's come out here during the public hearing portion? Or in response to staff comments?
I do have one, one last thing to say in terms of traffic disruption to neighbors and such. I'm not sure that it would be, you know, any more frequent than than a long term renter perhaps. Most of our reservations, we require a two or three night minimum stay. And again, I'm not sure that it would be any any more increased travel kind of back and forth than typical long term renter.
Thank you.
From my perspective, I wasn't surprised at all at the negative comments because I share some of those concerns deeply. Of course, the real question is, what can I do from here to mitigate those risks? And I believe that having a good property management team on board is what I need to do. Thanks to Mr. Yagi for his comments. We rented his home one summer when we were there when we were building our house. It's beautiful. But vacation rentals have been going on in that neck of the woods for years and years and years. And that's how we got to go to the mountains when we could no longer fit in Marge's house. So that said, I hope you will consider our application and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we will close the public hearing portion in regard to this docket item. Planning Commissioners, further discussion?
So this is Commissioner Fitch. Guess I would like to make two points. One, I would be receptive to the idea of simply striking out the dates in condition four on page eight that would eliminate the between June one and October one, since that's not really part of the requirement as passed. Secondly, I think that we just did discuss the issue. But when Planning Commission considered the vacation short term rentals policy and the associated regulations, that we were concerned about the question about enforcement and I think that issue was pretty heavily aired that it was going to be difficult to enforce all of these things across the entire county. But having said that, I think the the policies were discussed by Planning Commission and approved by the county commissioner. So the comments from Mr. Stern and from Ms. First really seem to be raising the whole question of allowing vacation rentals at all. And I do think that policies is that's settled. It can come back before the commissioners, but the question before us right now, it does is, does this proposal meet the standards of the special review required from this applicant? And so far, I hear the concerns, but I haven't seen any evidence that it does not, in fact, conform to the requirements that we established when this vacation rental licensing program was approved. So I I'm in support of it. I hope there are no problems with the neighbors. I live next to an Airbnb. I don't have complaints. If there was, we would resolve it directly with our friend, the neighbor who owns that owns that property. But it seems to me on the the question before us is has this application met the requirements? And I see that it seems to have done that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Shu. I also agree with Commissioner Fitch. It seems like some of the complaints were generally about the policy and not specific to the property. So given the short special review use criteria that set up, I think, you know, maybe there's concerns about criteria two, which is about relationship to surroundings, seven, transportation and twelve harmed people. I find that the relationship to surroundings and the harm to others, I'm satisfied with the enforcement type mechanisms here with both the county and the property manager. I also am not clear how neighbors want enforcement done. If it's not by neighbors, I don't think we want a police state where there's cameras everywhere and there's enforcement by some county employee. I'd rather have my neighbor just let me know if there's something I miss rather than, you know, constant patrols. And then with transportation, it seems like, you know, after the driveway is extended and there's a new plan out and then, you know, the road is accessible during even a snowy time. I'm not so worried about that and and, you know, staff was able to look over the driveway. So I find myself in support as well as I'm okay with striking out the the date requirement too.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Question?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Quigley. Just like to put out that, you know, I think Commissioner Fitch's comments, I agree with comments that have been made as well in general in support of the recommendations that the staff has put together for approval of this. I think, as mentioned, the comments from the community are valid. But I think within the framework that we're looking at here, you know, there are adequate measures in place to to address those things. I don't see any gaps there. It's more looking at how how they would be addressed when they're brought up and it feels like there are the the necessary correct pieces in place for that to happen. So in general, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Anything further from anyone?
This is Commissioner Libby. Nothing further in from me. I'm happy to make a motion. Sounds like we're going to do so.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep. Again, this is Commissioner Libby. I move that the Planning Commission recommend the Port County Commissioners conditionally approved docket SU dash twenty one dash zero 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 one starter vacation rental with the eleven conditions listed in the staff report, one amendment to condition four to strike the words between June first and October first from the commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Commissioner Fitch.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shu.
Aye.
Commissioner Neski.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch.
Aye.
Commissioner Libby.
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley.
Aye.
And Commissioner Goldfarb votes aye. So the special use is approved. Anything further from staff? Since this was our only docket item today?
Actually, this is Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting again. It wasn't really a staff update, but I just want to recognize that today is Rainey Ott's last Planning Commission presentation. It wasn't really a staff update, but I just want to recognize that today is Rainey Odd's last planning commission presentation. Her last day with the county will be next Thursday and I just wanted to let the planning commission know that and thank Rainey for all of her good work that she has done for the county.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Rainey. Good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, with that, I think we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.